And we'll report, why don't we report back in 60 days?
Second for motion, there's a motion and a second to report back in 60 days with the process in which to move on vacation minutes. Please vote. Motion carries for zero. Taking us now to item 3.45 Supervisor Ashley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item is to approve the draft climate action plan which has been prepared to assist the county to comply with the state climate action planning law. That's Senate Bill 375, Senate Bill 97, and the more famous Assembly Bill 32, AB 32. And with the California Air Resources Board scoping plan as amended for the climate action plans. And also with direct staff to integrate the draft climate action plan into the county general plan and develop implementation strategies to achieve compliance of AB 32. And you look at this, this has really been a lot of work. Here's the climate action plan right here. And here's the greenhouse gas technical report right here. Here's air quality appendix right here. And finally, the greenhouse gas emissions screening tables for the county Riverside. You see, this is a lot of work and this is a lot of regulation. And, you know, it's, we all want our clean air and do our best to keep our air clean and our way alive, better controlled traffic and have, you know, green energy and all that's all called for in this plan. But this is something else. What I would really like to do is ask somebody from the planning department, Carol Sims-Luna or Frank Coyle, somebody to come up and sort of talk about, you know, what they did to get this far and what the plans are to get this implement. Is anyone here? Okay, here we go.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Again, my name is Frank Coyle, way of the planning department. Supervisor, excuse me, supervisor, as you indicated, we are in the process of preparing a draft climate action plan which is before you. We are currently updating our general plan. We are preparing an EIR for the general plan. I'm anticipating that the EIR will be out for public review by the end of the year, to planning commission next spring, and then to the board end of spring, early summer. And when this goes out, the climate action plan will be a part of that document for your review. With respect to the cap, we hired an air quality specialist to prepare these reports that are before you. Air quality specialist, they used a template which is an accepted industry-wide, very capable firm. We've worked with them in the past. We are highly confident that they will prepare a plan that will be accepted. And again, we're looking at the cap to be before you with the EIR about a year from now.
About a year from now. You know, Frank, when you look into this, how many other states have adopted?
Other states?
Other states.
I'm not aware of other states, but within the state of California.
Massachusetts had something like this going appearing in the camp.
Yeah.
In the paper literature. I don't think too many other states have done this. This is, you know, we're, California's out front, we're always seem to be out front, and that's good. Unfortunately, you know, we're trying to do good here, we're gonna probably pay the price because, you know, businesses already, we're so over-regulating California in the eyes of many that were, businesses here aren't expanding here, they're expanding other places. And then businesses can come here, they're gonna go somewhere else if they can't, and they come here less. You know, they have, you know, they have to be here. And this is, you know, we're out front, we're gonna, we're gonna pay a price for this clean air, maybe lots of jobs, maybe some green energy jobs created offset. And this is it, everybody should be aware. This is, you know, we, this was passed through our legislature, the public is supportive of this, and we're gonna have to look at the consequences, both the good and the bad. So, thank you, Frank, for your work, and I guess we'll see you a year from now on this one.
You will see us a year from now. Okay. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Move approval? In a second. A motion and a second, item 3.45. Please vote. Motion, decision, and as for zero, again Supervisor Benoit not with us today, taking us to item 3.58 Supervisor Ashley.
Okay, 3.58 is something we've been working on a long time. Finally, you know, we've worked out labor agreements with virtually all the unions, and we have to get the approval to the retirement contract with the California Public Employees' Retirement System. And it's, and to adopt miscellaneous and safety lower-tier to pension benefits. And this has been a long time coming, this is post pension reform. But also, there's, I know, I know if the sheriff is here to like to comment, the sheriff came up, I know the sheriff has expressed his fears about this is gonna make him, it's harder for him to compete and attract people to serve in the best sheriff's department in the state of California, of course, I'm concerned. And I know, so, we're doing this, and we feel we have to go this way, but, you know, there's pluses and minuses. Sheriff, please give us your opinion.
Well, good morning, Board Chairman and members of the board. Stan Sniff, Riverside County Sheriff, and I understand that the agreements are in your pocket now with the labor unions, and that's, that's fine. My comments are largely directed on the safety component. My understanding from the HR director is that the way the package originally went up to CalPERS several months ago, they conjoined both miscellaneous and safety, so that causes them a little bit of grief to recock that issue. My focus is on the safety component, not miscellaneous. My focus is not to dissuade you from pension reform, I think all of us get that. But as I've expressed to you a number of times, indirectly on the pension issues as far as the safety component and the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, we keep, compete in a very specialized market. I'm not gonna speak for the district attorney, but the impact of this also impacts the district attorney's office on their ability. And I'll talk to a couple of points today. What I'm asking the board to do on this thing is utilize great caution. Now, the staff report on this document came out yesterday, and obviously the agenda item came out near the end of last week, as is typical. The safety component, as I said strategically for the sheriff's office, your sheriff's department, in a, particularly in a period where we're not operating stably, but gonna see massive increases not only to offset attrition in our department, which is a normal process, but also a huge net gain in the safety component, it puts me at a strategic disadvantage. And what I'm asking the board to do is to make haste slowly on this component, excuse me, but to continue this item so that the sheriff's office can more properly address the staff impact that it's gonna have on our department. You're gonna make your decision based on the public good, but I think there's not been enough on the safety component from the management perspective. Those that are running the sheriff's office, those that are gonna follow me running the sheriff's office, those, that impact of this strategically needs to be weighed by the board before you make your considered decision. And again, you've been dealing with this for quite a while, so it's not something new, and it's not something that's burned a hole. Employee pickup costs, you've already dealt with, that is now well underway. The impact on this as far as savings are pretty much long-range. We all get that they're potentially large, but the devil is typically in the details. One of the concerns that I've, that I've got is, I'm looking at potentially, and the numbers aren't in there yet, but with offsetting attrition, but also the net gain and the huge corrections growth that's gonna be before the department for the next four to five, six years, we're gonna end up hiring hundreds, probably on the order of 700 to 1,000 deputy sheriffs in this core component. At a critical time when not just holding even, but greatly expanding is gonna put us at a huge disadvantage. One of the key things, this will immediately cut off if you pull the trigger on this today, is any laterals coming to our agency from other ones. And that's gonna impact the district attorney's investigative unit as well. I'll let the DA speak to that, that issue, much smaller component, but I have a massive component on this that's put at risk. And we have traditionally relied upon other communities that were in financial difficulty, those officers coming for better pay and benefits to our agency. And you quite literally turned this agency in, potentially into a training ground, where people come to work for us for a short amount of time at considerable cost to our county taxpayers. We train them, and then they fly off to other agencies where there's better pay and benefits. And I've already outlined to the board, if you recall, on the 29th of March, I laid out every agency in this county, every sheriff's office surrounding us, including LA County, and none of them are going in this direction. And I understand all the arguments that they're all gonna eventually get there, but that doesn't do me any good strategically in the next three or four years on something that's gonna take effect, in Riverside's case, four years from now, because their commitment is locked. And so you put me at a disadvantage. The miscellaneous are clearly the majority on this, and that's statewide. The public safety component is a very small component of it, very specialized folks. So I urge you to make haste slowly, continue this item, at least on the safety component of it. One of the things I'd like to reiterate for the public record and for you once again is there's a lot of misleading information out there, almost myths, as far as what retires at what age and at what cost. As you know, we hired a number of deputy sheriffs over the last few years. The average age that we hire Riverside County Deputy Sheriff is 28 years of age, not 20 and a half or 21. We get a few. The vast bulk of them are between 25 and 35. In the last few years, the oldest I've hired is 45. Raising it from 50 to 55 damages this department and wastes taxpayers' dollars. I don't need, you don't need, the community does not need deputy sheriffs that are 55 years of age. They physically cannot do the job, and we potentially are opening up a Pandora's Box of workers' comp issues that are gonna end up being before. This job, as many of you already know, is a young man and young woman's game, 20s, 30s, 40s, sometimes early 40s. Yes, clearly, people can serve in higher capacity in their 50s, and in my case, gonna be 63 this summer. You can do that job, but I physically cannot do the job that I once did as a 25-year-old city police officer, or shortly a few years later being a deputy sheriff, carrying the battle rattle, climbing across fences, getting in fights, physical contact with suspects. You physically cannot do it. Most of our employees go out at 50 years of age with substantially less than maxed out because they come in at an average of 28 years of age. They'll go out with 22 years times 3% service credit. But the 55-year cap, regardless of whether it ends up being 2.71%, whatever the factor is at that rate, that does not help the county. I need to be able to clean the department as far as giving an easy exit for somebody, even if they came in at age 40, or 45, or 35, or 30, at 50 years of age. And I think most of the law enforcement executives that I'm aware of stand very fast behind Turnover, we've already seen the damage so far in the department, even after the budget battles last year. We've had our brand badly damaged to some degree. Those young men and women that we spent a lot of money on in really tough times for you, and the board was gracious enough to end up increasing the staffing levels to deal with Larry Smith's expansion. And as I indicated to you, the turnover of most of those young men and women, we've now hit 48 so far this year that have left, that we hired in the last couple of years, again, at a lot of taxpayer dollars, that have fled to other agencies because they sense instability in this county. And so I think we need to use great caution as far as what we do, particularly these things that are gonna have a tremendous strategic impact. The allied agencies, as I indicated to you, I put up that chart, there's none of them that are doing what we're doing, very few are even doing the employee pickup cost. You've already crossed that bridge, the department has supported that bridge with you as far as getting that, those savings back. But I think we need to use a little caution before we jump off a cliff without thinking it through. And I, for one, as the county sheriff, would like at least to have the courtesy of being able to respond back formally to the board, and then you make your considered decision as far as whether that weighs out or does not weigh out. So I would ask that you continue this item on the safety component. If they have to recock it for both miscellaneous and safety, that you also direct staff to cease this from being conjoined so you can deal with each component separately, and let's deal with it in a normal deliberative fashion as far as having input before we make the jump. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Stan. Ms. Oliver, could you come forward? We talked yesterday, I understand the sheriff's concern on this, especially as it relates to laterals, experienced officers that we hope to have transfer over to our agency. But I understand there's also an issue related to how this is submitted to PERS. Right now, it's currently in one package. If we separate it out, we have to go back in and cause further delay.
Right. CalPERS has a process of making amendments that requires us to submit the amendment request. They take approximately 60 days to get the paperwork back to us, and then they have a process in terms of the resolution being reported in open session and time for review, and then basically it takes another two months after you pass today's adoption to actually implement the amendment. So, first of all, that means, because we did put them together as both of them happening in one amendment, we would have to start completely over for all of our employees. And I realize that some people would say that $2.8 million is not very much. I think that it is enough to be concerned and take action. Secondly, we have been working on this since April of 2011. With all due respect, sheriff management has had a say in this. When your board first looked at these items, we had selected a more severe pension plan, and through the input of the sheriff's department, your board chose to go to a different plan, which is called 2% at 50, but it provides for a higher benefit of 2.7 at 55. So, 2% at 50 is the basic benefit, but it does continue to increase if somebody stays those last five years. Our history in terms of sheriff's deputies retiring, I unfortunately did not get the years of service, but they normally retire between age 53 and 54. So our deputies do retire a little bit beyond age 50 now, and there's no reason to expect that that would change with this program. We also did some checking with the other agencies around us, and our information clearly shows that Los Angeles County has a 2% at 50 pension benefit. Now, they do have further increases to the pension benefit, they're not in CalPERS, so they don't have the 90% limit on their pensions as we do. But they do have further increases if you continue to work beyond age 50, but they have a 2% at 50 benefit. Orange County does have a 3% at 55, slightly different from ours, and San Bernardino does still have the 3% at 50 benefit that we currently have. San Diego County has 3% at 55, and Ventura County has 2% at 50. So, we have looked at that, and again, we've looked at the entire state, and we all have recognized that all agencies are going toward reductions in benefits. The savings in the first year of implementation of this plan, as I said, was estimated at $2.8 million, and for the safety alone, it's a half a million dollars in savings based on our estimations. The thing is that if a deputy comes in in November of this year under 2% at 50, this first-year savings exist, but that person's going to have savings for this county for the rest of their career. This isn't just a one-year savings. So, at the point in time that we change the tier, the savings begin, and they continue for those employees' entire career. So, the savings to this benefit are consistent and significant.
Barbara, if we were to separate it out, the, again, you've gotta go back up to PERS to do that, that's a couple of month delay, as I understand it.
It's, if we did it today, we would be able to get the paperwork for the miscellaneous portion two months from now, and it would become effective in October instead of August.
And in doing it that way, if we were to do it that way and go through a process for the sheriff to try to determine what the positives and negatives are of this, what would the ultimate potential cost to us be because of that delay?
Well, again, the ultimate cost is a career-long savings, but, as I said, for our miscellaneous group, by pushing it back by just two months from now, the cost for this first year would depend on actual hires, of course, but we are hiring, we are continuing to hire approximately 1,000 employees per year. And the sheriff's, of course, one of the larger hires, but there are miscellaneous hires going on. And I would guesstimate that we would, it would cost us about $400,000 to the miscellaneous for the delay of two months only.
All right. Well, personally, I mean, I understand the sheriff's concern. I think, this is just me talking now, I believe that we've already gone through the process of downsizing, we're going down to .75 per thousand in the unincorporated areas. We hope to get that back up through some additional hiring to give an additional, or to cause an additional challenge, if you will, in getting good people. And I, and just in talking to the sheriff and others within his agency, you know, they vet their new deputies, I think probably better than any other agencies around Southern California, which means we're hopefully getting the best of the best because you do an extra, you go above and beyond in terms of your qualifications. So, I think in adding to that challenge by moving forward today, especially when you're in a hiring mode, we need to consider how we address that. Sheriff, you were talking, you just want a couple of months or longer, which a couple of months to come back to us? Is that it?
First of all, my experience with recruits is that these young men are basically looking at salary. As our deputies get to age 35, 40, they begin to appreciate our pension plan. But as I say, our pension plan is in fact competitive, and our salaries are generous.
No, I realize, and I completely agree with you, Barbara, that the young deputies that we're hiring today, they don't really care. I mean, they just want a job, they get qualified. It's the laterals, the experienced guys and gals that you hope to bring over from another agency, where in fact you have lost in your agency a lot of senior people because of the issues of compaction, et cetera, so.
Well, in my case, I was a lateral that came from a small PD that had different benefits, and I'll tell you firsthand, that may be true, but I don't need anybody else in county government from the other portions of it to tell me what motivates them. Most deputy sheriffs, and remember, all ranks all the way through under sheriff are typically deputy sheriffs, but most of them go out at age 50. So it's baloney that they're basically going out with 54. I'm going to the retirements, I'm seeing the flyers, I know many of these people. Sergeants, yes. Lieutenants, yes. Some detectives, yes. Clearly, hire can go out at higher age. But my, the problem is, most of the boots on the ground, this is young men and young women, and that's the job, that's what we need to keep here. When we end up spending the money hiring them, we've gotta have incentives to keep them here rather than going to other agencies. And let's be careful on the data. I looked myself personally this morning at Orange County Sheriff. Their recruiting for a trainee is 3% at 50. So there's a lot of verbiage in the newspapers about people thinking and going and arguing back and forth, but we need to stick, in our line of work, we deal with facts almost continually. And the board deserves to have facts before you make your measured decision. And my concern is, let's not act hastily. In the end, it may not change your decision, but I have not had the opportunity, nor the department formally, to really weigh in on this, regardless of what was set up here. And I think that the sheriff's department does deserve the opportunity. It may or may not impact the ultimate decision you make on behalf of the public, but let's make haste slowly on this. Now, whether it ends up being two months, as you said, Chairman, because of the time it takes to recock, that's fine. If it's faster than that, I'm okay with that as well as far as bringing it back to the board.
All right. Thank you, Stan. Supervisor Beston?
Sheriff, Sheriff, if you're willing to absorb the extra costs or savings, I mean, you're making a lot of claims here, out of your own budget, that'd be one thing, then I'd say have at it, we will listen to you and only you about what motivates people, not even employees yet, to make a choice or not make a choice, joining the county. But since, as I understand it, this is extra money that we have not yet, we're open to save, and now we're gonna be spending additional general fund sums for your desires here. My way of thinking, if we wanna spend the extra money, let's put deputies back on the unincorporated streets where you say that we're almost hitting rock bottom now, rather than, rather than giving the money to people that haven't even been hired yet here who are going to join us as correctional deputies. And my understanding, Barbara, time after time, when we've gone into negotiations, we've been told that, well, the rate of RSA ranks, the deputies are, probably need some catch-up in various areas, they need to be increased, but our correctional deputies are ahead of market. I remember hearing that over and over again, our correctional deputies were ahead of market, at least on their pay and pay, their regular compensation. Is that still the case?
Our correctional deputies are at, even with other people, but they are not under market. I mean, they're not over-market anymore. It's becoming a more critical spot, and they need the money they're making. So that part of it, I, it's, our correctional deputies, the rate is somewhat lower than our street deputies, and they are with the market, so.
All right. We've mentioned over the last couple of years that if there were trouble recruiting, that there were other ways to handle that. You know, there are other things, one-time, one-time adjustments that can be made to attract qualified people, rather than granting blanket, in this case pension increases that go on for the lifetime of the employee. That's where we're trying to get away from here. So, Sheriff, why don't we see what happens? And if there are problems, if you're recruiting qualified correctional deputies, let's make those adjustments. Instead of holding up the whole train here of pension reform, which has been talked about, you're really ad nauseam, really, and we've heard from you on repeated instances about your fears about this. And as I say, if we have the money, general fund, if you're willing to absorb the costs out of your own budget, that's one thing, I'd say have at it, and you'd be the judge of that. But you're asking for additional general funds here of a substantial amount. And I'd say, if we have that money, let's put new deputies, some of those new 50, back on the unincorporated streets where you yourself say that that was a top priority.
Well, Supervisor, we can certainly pull deputies, shut down jail cells and do that, or close courtrooms, but I don't really have that luxury. The other issue is as far as the spending of additional funds on this, that's perhaps one way to look at it, but I think what I'm asking for is an opportunity to make a considered decision here and have input into it. And clearly, if staff had not conjoined both these together, we really wouldn't be in this box at this point.
Okay. Any further comments by members of the board? I think we've aired the debate, Barbara.
Just one, again, I want to emphasize, the board originally had chosen a 2% at 55 pension for safety members. And you did listen to the sheriff in saying that that was not going to be something that he could live with and work with in future years, so please keep that in mind as well.
Barbara, what's your deadline on this? Again, you need to submit this to PERS, does it have to be submitted this week? Again, you need to submit this to PERS, does it have to be submitted this week?
If we do not submit it this week, we need to re, well, and especially if we're going to give the sheriff, separate them out, we need to start the paperwork all over again. And that will take two months for us to be able to bring it back for miscellaneous only. And again, we did build into our budgets this year for all departments, the savings expected from this two point eight million dollars.
What do you think will be, when it takes, when it comes back to us, whether we delay it two months, when it comes back to us, would it come back with an approval by PERS with a buyout or sign out?
If it comes back, when we go back to PERS, it will take two months for them to get the paperwork reestablished.
Yeah, I'm sorry, if we were to submit, if we were to approve this today, and it were to come back to us, it'll take how long for it to come back to us with an approval?
The final implementation date would be August twenty-third.
Okay. How many employees do you propose, or do you estimate that we'll be hiring in the next two months?
I don't have those numbers. We have a sheriff's academy that we are currently recruiting for, and I think we have approximately, I'm going to guess at about two hundred positions out at DPSS that we're trying to fill. So, we're probably talking about two hundred and fifty employees in the next two months.
Actually hired?
Actually hired.
Okay. All right. Supervisor Stone?
Barbara, are you telling us today that you can delay this for a week in reporting to PERS so that we can have a chance to adjust some of it for you?
No, sir, actually, we can delay it by one week.
Okay, I'm going to make the motion that we continue to this for one week and entertain meetings with the sheriff to better understand his concerns, but I just want to say that we worked very hard on pension reforms. I understand the recruitment issues with the sheriff, you're comparing us to counties that have a much more affluence, unfortunately, than Riverside County does, the cost of living in those counties is much more, our pension formula doesn't really deviate that much from theirs. Ours is two point seven percent at fifty-five, or two percent at fifty, either way you want to look at it. But, I'm willing to engage in discussions, but I am not supportive of taking two hundred and fifty employees and for the life of their pensions, having to give another point, which to me is going to add up to hundreds of thousands, if not maybe millions of dollars over a thirty, thirty-five year period of time, at a time when we're struggling to make ends meet in this county. And I like Supervisor Buster, want to see more officers on the street and get out from underneath that flooring of point seven-five officers per thousand. But, I think that the sheriff deserves the opportunity to have time to digest those and the sheriff's concerns with the board, and the board will make an appropriate decision, maybe even the recommendation that you're making, but I think a one-week delay would give the sheriff the courtesy that I think we should afford him.
Supervisor, don't, I'll join that, I'll join you in that brief delay, is the entire board going to be here next week?
No, there will only be three board members, that's why we moved it up to this week.
I will be here next week, that's correct. Okay, so, will two weeks cause a problem for you?
I won't be here until the third.
Yeah, you won't be here. If it doesn't happen next June twenty-sixth, then all of these papers have to be resubmitted. June twenty-sixth is the absolute...
It's either today or you will not be here next week, Jeff.
I wasn't planning to be here next week.
I'm not going to be here. I don't know about Supervisor Benoit.
Supervisor Benoit, I don't know if he gets back in time. No, Supervisor Benoit will not be back.
That's correct. The next time we have a full board is July thirty-first.
July? July thirty-first?
July third, Supervisor Ashley will not be here.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that one.
Well, my wife has a doctor's appointment, and I must be with her, so I cannot be here June until the third, I am sorry.
What about a Monday workshop, we can gather on a Monday and just have this as a single agenda item before the twenty-sixth? If that would, we can do some of the schedules.
We have a special meeting where we can, we get these four people here.
Let me suggest that we put this over to the afternoon so that we can look at the calendar and determine who all is going to be here over the next couple, three weeks. So, with that, will we just continue this over to the one-thirty calendar, and get to the discussion?
Thank you.
Okay. Before we do, I'd like to comment this a little bit.
Sure.
Like Supervisor Stone, I assure those concerns, I'm afraid that on pension reform, we're going to snatch the feet from the jaws of victory here, we're not very careful. And I think we have to look into other incentives to make sure that we're attracted in place we need to. You can always deploy higher future pay, you can always like signing bonuses, or like lateral bonuses for laterals, you can, there's other ways to do it. You see how Kaiser Permanente always seems to have, they're in on nurses, and they do not have the best pension plan, they have the best pay plan. So, there's a, I think there's other ways to accomplish the goal if we need to, if we have a problem in recruiting.
Did you want to make a substitute motion?
I think we still have the special meeting, have a chance to air it out, but this is, these are my concerns.
Let me suggest that we, before we do any motion, let's ask Keisha to have her staff poll each board office between now and one-thirty to determine who's here, let me know, and we can bring it back and determine where we're wrong for this. Okay? Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah, I just suggest along the lines of what you're all talking about, the sheriff's concerned about, rightfully so, if they can't draw adequate applicant pool, if they can't, you know, over a year or so, they start losing, we would want to know that, we'd want to make these adjustments as soon as possible. So, I think it's possible, and I think there's going to be a lot of purpose now, to monitor this situation very closely with the assistance of the sheriff, and see how things go, and then have this array of backup, one-time incentives, bonuses, whatever you want to call them, to get better qualified applicants if we cannot get them. But, I don't know what the experience probation had, who has a little experience, they had to hire quite a few people in a short period of time, the state didn't give them very much time on this shift of low lows over the county, but, you know, that's a law, unfortunately, area not quite the same as hiring correctional deputies, but let's develop that program over the next couple of months, but to throw a monkey wrench here in the entire workings of the changes in the pension system seems unwarranted, seems unwise, and I think we all have invested interest in understanding what people think about Riverside County when they're considering being employed here, and maybe we ought to do more reviews of our employees in critical occupations after we've hired them, after we've seen, after they've seen what the working conditions are, so that we can better adjust in the future. I think the sheriff's hit on a very important area, but it's one that we have to handle here, I think, you know, in a, I mean, we can't anticipate this and grant this blanket kind of a waiver to the whole pension reform program, because what if it doesn't occur? What if we are able to attract qualified applicants for the most part? We don't know what's going to happen. So, that's the kind of motion, if someone can formulate it, I'd like to see, and I think it's something we really need to have an active, ongoing engagement in at all key levels of the county here in the future.
Supervisor Stone?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, tackling pension reform was a very challenging task for the board, and we stood united, we had our backs up against the wall, we got a lot of resistance from employee unions, but ultimately, we stepped up the plate, and we did what the citizens expect us to do, and that is to protect the public treasury. And, you know, I think that when we have an issue of this magnitude that comes up that has a potential impact on a department head, whether it's HR, whether it's county council, it's very difficult to release an agenda on a Wednesday night and have somebody try to absorb and contend with that agenda item in such a short period of time. So, I guess if there's a theme here that I've witnessed in the past couple of months is that, you know, we need a little bit more vetting with department heads, if there's going to be policy changes that are affecting the departments, so that they have an opportunity to appropriately discuss the situation with the county board members, with the executive office, and not giving them that time is like the state legislature releasing the draft of a budget two hours before they're ready to vote on it. And I think that we don't want to muddle ourselves after the state of California, which is, I think, extremely dysfunctional. But, you know, I think there's three votes, at least on the board today, that we need to follow through with our plan in pension reform. And let's get a report in six months and a year, and find out whether or not this formula that we've embraced, that we have planned for those savings in this year's budget, and if we modify it, we're delaying savings in this county, we're coming forward with a budget that we wanted to approve in September, we're not going to be able to approve in September because we're not going to have the right data, and it's going to cost us money. And like Supervisor Ashley said, that we have other ways in which we can attract employees here through other incentives if we find that the formula is just not working. In fact, we can even go back to PERS in a year, and probably, Barbara, would imagine, modify a formula, if we want to modify a formula.
No, actually, I'm glad you asked that question. Once we make an amendment to, like, for example, we make an amendment to the miscellaneous plan, we cannot make another amendment for three years. So, we'd have to live with it for three years before we could change the formula.
Well, listen, there's a lot of people in the private sector that are living with a lot of harsh realities that they don't like. There's a lot of people out there looking for jobs. We're a county where the cost of living is much less than San Diego, Orange County, Los Angeles County. I still think our pension system is very generous, and, you know, it's just a tough decision, you know, I respect our sheriff, I regret that we didn't have enough time for him to absorb it, and if we see within the next thirty-six months that he's having trouble recruiting quality people, then let's readdress it. That's not to say we can't get a report in six months and a year to find out where we are, but something tells me that we're going to be able to get along, we're going to get qualified, good people, and our sheriff's department is going to grow, hopefully more revenue, so we can get back to the ratio of one per thousand, but this is just another one of those tough decisions that we've already made, we just need to codify here today, and let's start realizing the savings that our citizens expect of us. So, I'm going to chance making a motion, and again, with all due respect to the sheriff, I understand his concerns, hopefully, departments will get better notice, so that we can get feedback, but we have been talking about pension reform in this county for better than a year and a half, probably every meeting in the past eighteen months. There's been no question about the resolve of the board to enact pension reform, and we need to follow through with our commitments. And I'm going to make the motion that we approve staff recommendation and report back in six months and a year on any recruitment issues that the sheriff may be experiencing.
Second your motion, Supervisor Stone, but I think our reports on the recruitment should be as quickly, you know, right after we start recruiting and see how things go.
Okay. I'll support the motion, I'd like to say that we also, and there you direct HR to work with the sheriff, develop an incentive program to be ready to deploy if and as needed. Let's put that in the motion, that's, again, also.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, but I do want to ask Barbara Solinger, which I don't think's been asked yet today. If we do anything, I don't believe anyone, including the sheriff, has talked about changing the formula, it's just delaying it on behalf of the sheriff for a couple of months, so he can do an analysis. Is that what I heard you say? If we were to change it, it would open up negotiations, our contract with the Riverside Sheriff's Association, I would suspect, is that correct?
We would have to get their approval for an increased benefit, I don't think we would have a difficult time, but we also just went through a very difficult negotiation process where we gave other benefits in order to get this pension reform, and I doubt very much that I'd be able to get them back.
Okay, so with that clarification, we do have a motion in a second. I personally could support a...
Yeah, so Barbara, sorry to interrupt, so really, you'd have to add those costs over to the other costs that you just alberted. So, we're dealing with several millions of dollars at least at the short, at the lower end of the estimate.
So, before I call for the question, I personally could support a short delay, but it does appear that we have the, it feels like I'm a long ranger on this one, but I could not support changing the formula. As Jeff and others have said, we've gone through years of hard, difficult negotiations and to open that back up again. So, with that, Madam Counsel, I see you grabbing your microphone.
Just so that I understand, the motion that's been seconded is to go ahead and approve staff recommendation, and Supervisor Ashley also added as part of that...
To ask the human resources director and the sheriff's department working together to develop incentive program to use if and as needed, and bring it back to the board within approval, within three months, bring it back to the board within three months, would be better, just don't let it just...
Similar to what we did for nurses in the hospital, sounds, okay?
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Motion carries for zero. All right, that concludes our policy calendar. We're now going to our successor agency, to the redevelopment agency, and take the items from one through...